Oh, you're all set? All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal. Tonight's meeting for Wednesday, May 24th, 2017 at 6:35 PM at the room 320, the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far right, Wilma Engerman, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. And my left is Carl Baptiste Senior and myself, Nazir Akalasi, the chair. As you notice, we have a four-member board tonight. So whoever have a hearing have the choice to pass for the next time to get a full quorum. Jan, on regards to... I'm just gonna jump a little bit forward so get everybody out of here so you don't have to wait. It's John Spinelli, 9 Oak Hill. Jan is not here, so you have four of us. Carl did review the tape and he could sit on it. He said he did. But you have four people out of five. So it's up to you to...
This is what?
Continue the hearing or to wait for the next member's next hearing. It is the 14th, June 14th. Do you wanna come forward, so? Let's get you out of the way, so these people can't, don't have to wait. All right, Jimmy.
Okay.
We're gonna go quick to these people that are here. Petition 22-17, John Spinelli, 9 Oak Hill Road, on the continued public hearing.
Are they going forward?
What's your wishes?
Yes.
Are you gonna go forward?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, just sit back in the room. I thought you wanna pass. Okay. Sorry about that. Sorry. So sit in the back of the bus. Okay.
I think Wilma has something very important to tell me, so I wanna hear what it is before... 'Cause I can't listen to you and her at the same time. What's that gonna do with us? That doesn't have anything to do with zoning, I don't think. Nazir, can you, um...
Yeah.
Wilma's got a concern here.
How about?
She's got something about conservation, um, and somehow that, I guess, that impacts us as zoning. I don't know how conservation and zoning get mixed together.
Is this for Oak Hill? All right, when it comes in, we'll read it, okay?
Okay.
Is she here? Okay. All right, we got some minutes. Let's do some minutes first. For May 10, 2017. I've read them.
They were forwarded to by email. I've read them. They seem accurate to me.
All right. I've read them too. They look good.
I move to accept them as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. So it's 4-0-0.
Okay.
We have a discussion modification request from Walmart. Is anyone here from Walmart?
Yes, sir.
You're representing Walmart?
Yes, sir.
All right, you wanna come forward?
Yeah, sit right there.
On the table.
Name, rank, serial number.
Lisa Mayday. I'm with Petrillo Architects from New Jersey, representing Walmart.
Thank you.
All right, you wanna let us know what you guys are requesting?
Um, we're looking for a site plan amendment to add parking spaces to the Walmart over at Wareham, to the side of the building. We'd be adding parking to what's already there, so we won't be upsetting the parking ratio because of what we're adding. We're also gonna add a canopy to the side of the building. And what this does is their new online grocery pickup program, where somebody pulls up to the side of the building, and we're gonna have signage directing them down the side, so they're not going in the main parking area. They would order groceries, merchandise, whatever they wanted, online. They pull up, call, they'd be given one of the stall numbers, or they can take a stall and tell us what stall number they're in. Somebody says, "Okay, we'll be out in five minutes with your order." And in the back room, near that back door, there's gonna be dollies and a cooler and a freezer that's existing. We're gonna have dollies for merchandise, frozen goods, and cold goods, which will then just be put into one big cart and taken out one of the existing side doors and put into the customer's cart. And they pull away. They never even get out of the car.
All right. Before we go forward, did you run the plans already to the town planner? Did you drop off a set earlier?
We did. We had sent him a package of the site plan, and they had requested that we come and...
Charlie, did you have a chance to look at it? All right. My recommendation, I definitely can't... I speak for myself. I can't give you an answer tonight. Our recommendation, due to the size of the project, we run this by our town engineer. You have to coordinate with town planner. Is that how it works? She coordinates with Ken? I did discuss it quick with Ken. I don't have a problem being minor modification, but we'll let the board decide, so. Okay, Wilma, do you have a question about it?
Is that on the side of Toby Road that you're going?
Yes.
Can we have a set of the plans so we could look at this?
Absolutely.
I mean, so, everybody see, I did discuss it with Ken.
You're in here.
Oh.
You're in here?
It says Walmart.
Ah, okay.
Separate call.
It says Walmart.
So we have a set, so we're...
I got all kinds of plans here now.
Animal.
I looked in the room, and this is a small package. Here's one for you.
Do you have a half-size if it's less comfortable?
Yeah, yeah.
Half-size would be nice.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Why don't we all look at this, because there's way too many plan and information. All right, you wanna like point for us what you guys doing? I'm assuming this one, right?
So here's our building, right here.
Right.
Here's all the parking.
Right.
Customers would come down this way.
Right.
And this is our signage directing them either from this road...
Charlie, you wanna come?
Down the side.
Yeah.
And this is a, this area right here. Right now, there's a sidewalk that just ends.
Right.
And then we'd be adding six parking stalls. Here's your door that will exit. They'll be striping behind it for the associate that has to pack the trunk. And there's signs at the, on the asphalt.
Yeah.
And there's another sign attached to the wall that has the phone number to call and the stall number that they're in. And here we have, this is the prepping area. So we have a cooler here, and there's a freezer. There's freezers here. So we'll put all the frozen goods and dollies here, cold goods and dollies here. And other miscellaneous goods will be in the back here where we stock the merchandise. This is general merchandise.
This infrastructure already exists?
Already exists. Racking exists, everything. They're just little totes, plastic totes on wheels, that will go underneath the existing racking, so there's no installation per se.
And there's a canopy above this?
There's gonna be a canopy above that, yes. And there's a rendering of the canopy in there.
And this here is, now has parking here?
Yes, correct.
Instead of over near.
Right.
So what, how are you replacing this parking that was here?
Uh, there's no, there's, the parking ends, I think, this is the last space, right here.
Okay, so you're not taking any parking away?
Not taking, we're actually adding six of our spaces just for this.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question, if I may. When Walmart designed this site, did they already have this in mind?
No.
Do you think it's feasible they already had this in mind or provided? It seems pretty much like it fits in pretty easy.
I think so, because we have, the site's a store, where you come in the store, where guests can run in and pick up their stuff. I don't think that they anticipated the overwhelming amount of shopping that people wanna just do online and don't even wanna step into a store. But I think that the parking ended, because that's the maximum parking that we were prepared to have.
Okay. I'm not criticizing or commending. I just was curious. It just, it fit so well. It was like...
Right, right. These are your main entrances.
So you're asking us permission to do what? Add the canopy?
Add the canopy, basically.
And why is that a zoning issue?
Because that's a special permit, and it's called a zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, has, they have to come through.
But it's, it's not, it's not a variance, it's...
No, but I'm under the special permit, so every time they do such thing, they have to go through.
Yeah, I got it. And where, and could you point again for me, please, where you're gonna be adding any signage?
So you come in in several locations. You come off the street here, in which case, we would like to direct people to go around the front, because we don't want it to interfere with truck traffic. Here, they'll be directed across the front, here, and then this way. If you come in this way, we're gonna direct you straight across. And if you come across the main road, we're gonna direct you straight down. And we only have a few signs where we could, so there's a turtle fence, and there's only a little bit of space. I don't know if we're allowed to use that foot, foot and a half of space. Sorry.
It's okay.
I don't know if we're allowed to use that foot and a half or two feet of the grass or the mulched area.
We let the town engineer worry about that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so let's decide if it's a minor...
I say it's minor.
Or major. Well, let's vote on it, and we let them coordinate with the town planner and town engineer. How's that? And then we listen to Charlie's comment, then we go from there.
Okay.
All right, is that fair enough?
Absolutely.
All right.
There are renderings of the canopy, in case you're interested, right here. So this is your wall signage here, your canopy goes over the top, and you could see the striping rendered on the bottom. There's also a sign, and I don't know if that would have to go before the board, or is that a separate zoning?
A sign, and we'll let Charlie, town engineer, deal with this. Let us know, and town planner.
Okay.
You know, I think if you add in a sign in a building, I think it needs to be...
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, you gotta see the building inspector. If it's within the guidelines, you probably don't... What do you think, Charlie? I don't think you should come here. But if it's not with... Right, so whatever the bylaw for that size and length and height of that building, if your sign complies, you don't need to come before us.
Okay. And if we find that it doesn't, we would have to take off a sign to put this one on?
Or you're gonna have to come for a variance, or whatever the case is, special permit or variance, whatever the building commissioner decides.
Okay. Is there any restrictions as far as painting the corner of the building orange?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Just wanted to double check.
Painting doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you.
You wanna take the plan back? We have too many of them.
This is yours?
Yeah, but you're welcome to hang on to it.
It's a smaller one. It's easier to handle. I'd keep it if you don't mind.
But I have a copy of that.
Well, they're gonna have to get a big size, big set. Yeah, we'll give them a set to take.
So you're asking me to take a look at it and to submit a report to you?
Yes.
So what would you do? Continue this discussion until the next meeting?
Well, we're gonna decide if it's a minor or major. Regardless what it is, we're gonna ask the applicant to talk to town planner, get a 53G account, whatever the case is, for you to review it and give us comments, so we know how to make our decision.
Okay.
It's way too many, much information for, I mean, the idea, we got it, but the details and the signage and drainage, whatever the case is, it's too much for us to understand, probably.
I see. And do you, do you want that report before you make the decision?
I would like to. No, we'll make a decision today if it's a minor or major.
Okay.
Now, and we go from there. And like I said, if you can give us the report a few days, can email it to us before the next public hearing, so we could read it home.
I can do that.
Okay, all right.
The only thing I'd suggest is that you should write up a modification to the special permit, that you've made the decision that it's a minor modification that doesn't require a public hearing, and that goes on record.
We should, right?
I agree with that. Wanna repeat that?
Yeah, just repeat for me. I didn't get what you said.
If you vote a minor modification that does not require a public hearing...
Right.
You still need to modify the special permit terms to say that they have come in with that supplemental information to change the plan of the project.
So they're gonna...
Vote that it's of such a nature that it does not require a public notice and a public hearing. And that gets documented by getting put on record in the registry. It gets attached to the additional...
Yeah, but if it's not a, if it's not a public hearing, how can we? We could, we could record it?
You still, you still have to record the documentation and make sure that everybody knows that there was a minor modification, that you deemed it unnecessary because of limited scope.
Okay, but how can we modify the special permit without a public hearing?
'Cause it's minor.
No, but he said he wants to modify...
I can get you the language of it. I can suggest some language to you. I'll talk with Ken about it. But I'm pretty sure that you need to document it somehow, and it goes to the, would go to the town clerk as an attachment to your special permit. And then a copy of that would go to the registry, so that they know that there was this modification.
Right.
All you're saying is...
But my question is, if you want us to modify the special permit, we have to have, to add the language, saying a minor modification is allowed, that's mean we have to have a public hearing for this, and reopen for a special permit to modify it?
No, no. Let me get to the language on it.
All right, we'll deal with this later.
Advise you properly.
All right.
Pretty sure that it simply needs to be a document that goes on record, that references the existing special permit, and that this is a modification that didn't require a public hearing because of the scope of the project.
Okay.
So let me get that, and I'll get that right away.
All right, very good. Well, let's, we'll vote right now if it's minor or major, and we go from there.
Well, we're still talking to Charlie.
Do you wanna do that?
No.
Is, what?
We're, we didn't get all the information, whether it should be minor or major.
It is our discretion to decide if it's a minor or major.
But then what's the use of having, if we vote, if it comes up minor, what's the use of even having her come before us? Just note, go to the building inspector and have him...
No, well, minor, she gotta get approval from us. She gotta come, the applicant has to come back with plans, and the town engineer notify us. We'll go over them and vote on it, if it's yes or no, after we decide if it's a minor or major. Either way, we still have to vote on the modification of the plan.
That's without Charlie's input?
Right, for next hearing.
Yeah, so...
But we have to decide now if it's a minor or major modification. This way, the applicant know which way they're going. If they're gonna file for a major special permit, or whatever the case is, public hearing, or they're just gonna go with a minor modification and follow the simple routes we just talked about.
In all due respect, I question whether we need to have Charlie do this. They're not changing the parking lot. They're not changing the... They're putting up, they're gonna paint some stripes on the ground and put a canopy over it?
I do, I totally agree, but I feel more comfortable due to the size of the project and the traffic. And Charlie's very familiar with it. He followed it for the last eight years. I would be more comfortable to get some advice from him. If it was like a small grocery store on the corner...
I won't fight you on it. I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I just, I don't think we, I mean, with all the respect to all of us, I don't think we're capable of all the details of that project. We'll let, we'll let the town engineer do it. We go by his advice, and then we'll decide.
Okay.
Okay? All right, Carl? All right, so would you like to make a motion?
I move that it's a minor modification.
All right, we have a motion that it's a minor modification.
Second.
Second, with Carl. Any discussion? Okay, and if, I would like to say, if it's granted as a minor modification, we follow the route like we talked about.
Absolutely.
You follow a town planner, town engineer, and we go from there.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oppose.
Opposed. 3-0, passes. Thank you.
So I should contact the town engineer and take the next steps?
Town planner, town engineer, just how you, the same way you applied for a discussion, you follow that route.
If that's the case, do we wanna tell her when to come back, or we're gonna let her come back at will?
He'll, town planner will let you when to come back.
Okay.
See if they could fit, I mean, if they have room in the agenda for the 14th, they'll send you back 14 or the 28th.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Petition 23-17, Lisa Williams...
Williams Cudero.
Cudero, 28 old, Glen Charlie Road.
They don't wanna open until the 14th?
Okay.
They're just telling us that it's on the public hearing?
Okay, so they wanna continue it?
They're not even asking to, it says not scheduled to be opened until June 14th.
Okay, so June 14th.
We can skip over that?
I had a, Nazir, you...
Go ahead.
As far as I know, we were told it's scheduled to be advertised by the 14th.
Okay, so it's the 14th? All right. Do we need to make a motion? Sure, go.
Do we need to make a motion? We didn't open it.
Okay, leave it until the 14th. All right. Shh, let me.
McIntosh, 4316.
All right, next hearing, 43-16, Christopher McIntosh, 22 High Dam Road. Reconsideration of decision.
Since we don't have a sufficient board, this has no choice but to go with the 14th.
Okay. Well, and, very good. All right, I understand. Okay.
So we're gonna continue to the 14th?
Let's, let's open it, then we continue, okay? Let's, let's read it.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 24th, 2017, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, for reconsideration of petition 43-16 for a variance/special permit from the requirements of Section 621 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Christopher McIntosh, 22 High Dam Road, Wareham, Mass, seeking to construct a garage located at 22 High Dam Road, Wareham, Mass. That's on assessors map 114C-2 lot 309 in the R-130 zoning district.
Okay.
I'd move that you continue that matter till June 14th, so that we can have a full board hear the case.
Okay.
Boom, yeah.
Jim?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor to continue until June 14th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you, counsel. Okay, continue public hearing, 17-17, J. and J. Holding. Jim, wanna take over that one?
No, it's continuing.
Are we gonna continue that?
Yeah, there's a letter in the thing, continue.
It's been opened. There's a letter with you. So I'm gonna excuse myself. Jim will chair for that.
But don't we have, okay, we have a request for a continuance until June 14th on this.
Right.
I guess it'll just be Carl and Wilma and I deciding whether or not we wanna continue. Is there a reason to not continue, or?
I'd say one more continuance, and that would be, because this is the third continuance.
They're continuing because we're not here, not because they're not here, so I think it would be difficult to be punitive on the applicant because we're not, if we're not present.
If I may say something, it is my case. If you don't continue it, it'll be constructively granted, because you don't have enough quorum. So it will be deemed approved the way it's presented. So we, you have to give the applicant a continuance.
Well, we can also deny it with our prejudice and then reapply, because there would be...
It's not the applicant's fault. You never had a quorum to open the hearing.
We had a quorum. We've had a quorum, but not enough to vote. They, they wanted five people.
Right.
The first two, and the only...
Okay, so you'd like to make a motion to do what?
As I said, we'll continue it one more time until the 14th.
Do you agree with that, Carl? One more continuance? No?
Do you wanna, okay.
I don't think your motion's gonna carry you. Would you wanna... Do you wanna withdraw it, or do you wanna vote on it? You just want it on the record that that's your position?
Well, I do think that's my position on, because we don't usually...
I'm happy with it going into the record that your position is that it shouldn't be guaranteed further continuances.
After next week, after the next meeting.
I'm not saying that we're gonna make that the rule. I'm just saying you're on the record for having that position.
Okay, fine. That'll be fine, I...
Okay. Carl, do you have a motion? No motion? So without a motion...
I'll make a motion that we continue to have a...
Okay.
Whatever that date is.
Okay. I would second that motion. So let's vote on it.
Can I just interject a second?
Yep.
Sure.
I don't think you can leave the continuance wide open like that. I think you have to establish...
I think we have to continue to the next meeting. I agree.
Certain and a time certain.
Would you like to modify your motion to be continued to June 14th?
I modify my motion to continue until June 14th.
Okay. And I had seconded that, so now we need a vote of at least two of us. How do you vote?
For the continuance.
Continue?
Yep.
And, so it's three. It's okay. It's unanimous. Fine. Continue to June 14th. Thank you.
All right, petition 18-17, CTG Property LLC, 3067 Cranberry Highway. And that is the Sonic. They requested to continue until June 14th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Wilma, you in?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
So, okay, so 3, 1, 0.
And this is on...
For Sonic and...
Sonic.
Sonic. Because this is the third, third, third time that they continued it.
No, that's the first...
Sonic has continued three times? Okay. Okay, so the vote is 3, 1, 0.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, just so that you know,
Yeah.
Ken Buckland and I met with representative from Sonic a week, 10 days ago.
Yeah.
Went over the plan, went over some of the issues that were raised at the previous hearing. And they're in the process of revising some things, looking some other things over based on the discussion that we had.
Right.
And also with the discussion that they had with Dave Menard from Municipal Maintenance. So they're working on some modifications, and that may be the reason why they need the extra time. But they haven't responded to my letter yet, because they wanted to get some of these other issues out of the way. So just to let you know that is...
Right, and as I understand, they're still searching for different location. That's what I heard, so. Okay, very good. We'll, I will give them the chance for next time. We'll give them a chance one more time.
Yep, we've continued them.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, I guess the last one.
Matt Spinali.
Petition twenty-two dash seventeen, John Spinelli, nine Oak Hill Road. John and Brad. Nice easy night. Forget ready. Don't get any details.
Yeah, exactly. Some pictures.
All right.
For you.
To which you're gonna continue, you're gonna proceed?
Yeah, they, they said that earlier.
Okay, yes.
All right, where did we leave it last time?
We had, we had an interesting question.
Just your names for the record.
Yeah, sure. It's John Spinelli, resident nine Oak Hill Road, Wayham.
Brad Bertolo, J C Engineering.
All right, so where did we left it? Go ahead.
We've, we've had a conversation just this evening with the abutters.
Yeah.
And it seems that they have a question regarding bylaws that would like to be answered.
Okay.
This evening, and perhaps maybe we want to discuss that first.
Okay.
If that's okay with the board.
What's the question?
That's fine. Who's got the question? Counselor, please come forward. Name and address for the record.
John McCaffrey, seven Oak Hill Road.
Okay.
To John's point, I, we've actually had a lot of discussions both after the meeting and tonight, so this was much more of a meeting of the mind. There was just one thing about the bylaw that, and this is section thirteen thirty-five subsection C.
Okay.
Which, should the bylaw Board of Appeals conclude that the proposed change would substantially increase the non-conforming nature of the structure or lot, the applicant will not be entitled to the issuance of a special permit. And I remember spinning my head around a little about what we're talking about, the, whether it's a lot or the structure, but reading that to me means, you know, it, there's no real distinction here. If you're now increasing this house size on a non-conforming lot, that does, you know, what is that, intensifies the non-conforming nature of the structure, and that puts into that whole case law thing. So that really is, I guess I'm looking if there's a position from the board, and if you tell me that I'm way off base and all that, but to me, I, I have a hard time reconciling that, that you're gonna put this, I'm not gonna call it a huge structure, but three times the size of what's currently there, that's gonna intensify the non-conformity. That being said, that is a question for me, just to reconcile, we have had substantial positive discussions between the abutters and the applicant, and there's another, you know, there's something to that as well. So that first question is, to me, just to reconcile that, I, I just don't see how that would allow this to go forward. And the alternative, we, there has been a discussion about a plan that we've all looked at, and if I'm paraphrasing the discussion, the house height is gonna be probably, we can get an agreement, I think it's twenty-eight feet or was that, was that...
Twenty-eight feet.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I, I think that based on what we've seen for the, the house structure, if that was conditioned as part of a special permit, that's probably gonna be, and I'm, you know, probably speak just for me, and it's probably gonna be something that is not gonna be objectionable to the abutters. I am still stuck on that first point, if you, if you could address that, but that is the context that we're in, is I think that the thought was, can we just, I, I needed that kind of answered, but in the background, we've made substantial progress about fitting this in and everyone not being so upset about it.
So the question, if I can...
Yeah, go ahead.
If I can filter that dialogue down into, your question is, do we believe that what he's gonna do substantially increases the non-conforming nature?
Of the structure or lot, as it reads in the bylaw.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking as I'm, I'm gonna ask you a question to try to answer your question. What's the non-conformity? Is it density? Is it setback?
Lot size and frontage.
Okay, we've already gotten past lot size and frontage in my...
It's a grandfather lot, it's an existing non-conforming.
I, I think I can answer.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It does not substantially increase the non-conforming nature.
I'm stuck on it, but I, that's...
I understand, I, I understand, I understand, you know, I mean, that's why, that's why there's always two lawyers in every court case with two opinions.
Lawyers, but...
And, and you know, I mean, but that's, that's, I believe that's my opinion, if the board agrees or disagrees, that's, do you want to vote on that or?
I, I do agree, I just wanna, like Jim said, they're not encroaching a setback, not the height, they're not asking for density, anything.
Yeah.
So technically, they don't have to be here, like, could I just get the permit?
I think we're gonna have a difference of opinion and I'm not gonna belabor it on that.
Okay. I just wanna also tell you, I did look at the case law, I don't know what I did with it, I printed the whole thing in Edgar Town. You, you printed the case, but you missed one very important letter, detail, there was also a variance for setback, that's why it was denied.
Yeah.
But you failed to put it on your case.
Did you get the Borkland case, which is...
No, but I looked at Edgar Town, it kinda, it kinda didn't sound right, but I read the whole thing, but I printed, I didn't, I don't know what I did with it.
The Bransford and Borkland are right on point, and quite frankly, I think we're gonna come to an agreement, but...
That'd be, that'd be the best thing.
That'll be a great appeal for me, so...
That'd be the best thing, but I did read the one in Edgar Town, and it was, there was a variance, that's why it was denied by the judge. It was, was upheld. So anyway...
Did we, did, excuse me, but we kinda went out of our normal process. I see another neighbor in the background, kinda anxious to speak, so I don't want, I don't want to run over him.
No.
And I don't know if we want to go back into our normal process and let the applicant speak first or...
No, no, we're gonna go, no, of course, yeah, let...
Okay. I think I'm...
Thank you, thank you. We answered, we, we wanted to answer the question.
Before you, before, I'm, before you go, you said you came to an agreement?
I don't know if we're there a hundred percent, but we're...
One at a time, just one at a time.
In my, my opinion that we've made substantial progress to doing that, so we're very close to that.
Okay, so that's great, so that's good.
If I may, it's, it's a very good thing. I think that what we've been able to accomplish is to show our neighbors and butters that exactly the plan that we have for the home, which in my opinion is a, a small home in comparison to, you know, what's gone, gone on, on the frontage of Tempest Knob, I think we've made them feel comfortable that we're not going the thirty-five feet which we are allowed and under to go. I'm very comfortable with the height that I've given them, which goes in accordance to the plan that we've already done. So really, all this is coming down to is if anybody wants to continue to appeal this, where we just keep going and going. It's always nice when people agree.
Right.
It seems that we're close to that, but now that to your point, we don't need our special permit to do the project.
Right.
It was my decision to come and apply for the special permit. I think we're within everything that we need to be in order for this project to continue, but if there's any questions from the board, we're happy to answer.
Okay. Sir, do you want, wanna come forward, please?
Dave Talby, five Oak Street.
Yes.
My understanding was that the hearing was continued to this date so that the chair could seek counsel on percent detriment.
Right.
Also, so that the board could have the time to make a site visit.
I did, I did go visit.
And so I'd like to hear the results of those two issues that forced a continuation.
Okay, the, regarding counsel, I disagree talking to counsel, it is totally up to us to decide. It's the board discretion to decide whether it's detriment or not, whether it's a special permit or variance. I would, I would not listen to town council to tell me what to say.
That was...
That's my opinion. The second one, I did walk the property and person, my personal opinion, I think it's a good project, it's not invasive of any kind. I looked to the house to the right, that's bigger than what they proposing, and to the house to the left, they're bigger what they proposing.
The house to the left?
This house footprint is a thousand, the councilor house footprint is at least fourteen-hundred. I'm a builder, I, I have a sense of size.
Square foot?
The footprint, so it's two thousand square feet both up, but, so the house next door, believe me, it's bigger what they proposing. But besides the story, I mean, he's complying, whether he's making a smaller or bigger house.
I, I understand.
This is totally up to the applicant. If he wants to make it three thousand square feet and it complies, it's his land.
I understand that, but I disagree with your comment about seeking counsel because that was your statement.
I, I thought about it and I, I, I reneg, I mean, reneg, my, my, my opinion, my dis... That's my opinion, not their opinion.
Okay.
I disagree. That's why we're here, and we have to use our own discretion to decide. That's my opinion, not the board's opinion.
Okay, so I hear your opinion, what about the rest of the board that ma, made those visits?
I don't know. Did, did you make a visit?
I did go by, yep. I'm, I'm satisfied, I think that what I see in front of me is far superior to what exists and I have no objection, I have no objection to this project at all.
What about your opinion about the detriment to my view?
I don't, I, I don't, I, I can tell you my opinion on that, whether you like it or not is moot, but I, if you be happy or leaving here tonight knowing my opinion, I'm happy to voice it. My opinion is that you stated that you depended on advice from a non-professional when you bought your house.
Yep.
You had a, a real estate agent, you depended on their testimony that this would never happen, so your argument is with them if you depended on their testimony, not me.
No, I'm not, that's not...
Your argument's not with this man, your argument's not with the town.
I think you're mischaracterizing my concern.
So...
I raised that, I raised that concern.
Okay, well then, you, you asked my opinion, I'm giving it to you. I'm not gonna, I don't want to debate my opinion, I'm just gonna state my opinion. My, my opinion is that we asked if you had a deed of view easement and your answer was, no, you do not.
You, you didn't ask that question.
Okay, I'm asking it now, do you?
I don't know.
No, I do, I looked. So you asked my opinion and that's it. I, I think, I think that the guy has every right to do what he wants to do, he's here as a courtesy, he gave you folks a chance to see his plans, I think he, I think he's gone above and beyond trying to be a good neighbor to you.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
All right, so, so just, just to be clear, at the last meeting, the, the, what, what was to happen going forward before this meeting was to take place, was that there was gonna be a site visit where the board was gonna take a look at, from my property line, and I gave you the permission to go up to my deck to see what the impact of my view would be from this structure. And also, the recommendation was for the, for Mr. Spinelli to, and I think it was this gentleman that brought that up to the board, to have some drawings ready so that we could have an idea, because I'm not an engineer, I'm not a builder, I don't know what twenty-eight feet means, I don't know what the average twenty-eight feet means, I just want to know how much of my view is gonna be obstructed by this very fair plan, agreed, he's not building a monstrosity, but my opinion was, I want to know how much of my view is gonna be impacted, and the board, you stated multiple times at the last meeting, that it was to your discretion about how much of a detriment that was going to be, and the discussion was, well, is twenty enough, is forty enough, and that's what we were going to, to try to get an answer for, for tonight. So that's, those are the questions that I was looking, have answered. I was never asked if I had a view easement in my deed. I didn't know that that was required, it doesn't, it doesn't state that in the bylaws.
No, it, it doesn't, it was brought up last week.
It wasn't, I listened to the tape again today.
Well, I think if you listen again, you hear, you hear the word view easement.
I will do that.
If I may.
Yes.
The, the case, when the town engineer suggested we get these plans to see the views, we, there's no base or rules.
I understand that.
So when, if we go ahead and ask the applicant to this, to do this, what's the base and the rule?
I understand that, I'm just...
So why, why going through this? I don't understand.
Because the board stated that that was the recommendation.
No, we didn't state it, the, the Mr. Rowley recommended, I said, but we don't have a base, we don't have standards. That's why I disagreed with it last time.
And the meeting was continued because of the objections that were raised to get more clarity on the situation, and that was what we were hoping to hear tonight.
Right, but if you're, Charlie, can you correct me, did I agree to do this thing last time? I totally, I would never agree to it because we didn't have a base to it, but...
As a part of the discussion, I simply made a, a point that there was a way of determining difference in elevations by doing a profile.
Right.
From one side of the road to the other and down to the water, so you could see the difference in grade, and I said, it might help you with your decision, but I don't think that anything definitive was actually determined that, or requested of the applicant that he do that.
It was, it was a recommendation, you didn't ask him to, to do it.
Right.
It was a recommendation, that would be, that would be a way to solve this issue so that everybody was on the same...
I, I would solve it if we have a base for it, if we have a standard. We don't have a standard for it. We don't have a standard says if it's a ten percent, it's a go, if it's a fifty percent, we don't, so we're gonna see a picture whether it's a hundred percent blocking you or a hundred percent, you can see, we don't have a standard. So we cannot comment on it, we can't, we can't make a decision on it.
So this is a, this is something that the board cannot rule on?
I cannot rule on it, no, personally, I can't. And we don't have anything in our bylaws that says blocking a view is allowed, that's why we have height restriction.
It's in the bylaw, can we read it again? It, it was right on the record last...
All right, one at a time, so, go ahead.
And I don't want to speak for Dave here, but Sean McCaffrey, seven Oak Hill Road. But I, I think we're starting to get off the track.
Right.
Okay. We're pretty close, okay, but I gotta tell you...
I'm not close any longer.
I, I, I think what's happened here is there's been some, some, no offense, your reaction to him has now got us in a spot, in this view easement, really? I'm, I'm a real estate attorney, that's a red herring you threw in his direction, he's a, he's a layperson, he has no idea what that is. So the unfortunate thing now is, the board's, the way you're dealing with us, is now getting to the point, we're like this close to all coming to an agreement.
That'd be great.
But if you're gonna push us and give us crap like that, then I'll deal.
Sir, sir, all right, listen.
And he's gonna pay the price because you're not being at least reasonable with us.
I, we are being...
Don't blow it, we have a deal here that's very close, the only thing I would say is...
I think you might want to think of your position as well, don't blow it, is kind of a, it's almost attorney being a bully.
If I, I'm sorry if I offended you.
Sir, let me, let me, listen, before we go forward, we all volunteers, we do the best we can, you're one, you're on a board.
I think you guys do a good job.
We are.
The tone is kinda switched.
But it is hard for us when we see an applicant, which I don't know this guy from anywhere, well, actually, I, I'm, I have to correct myself, one time I was visiting McDuffie and I saw him there. Remember me and Jenna, his wife? So, not his wife, McDuffie's wife, we were on the road, and we met him once. I don't know this guy from nowhere, and whether I know him or not, it doesn't affect my decision, but it's very hard for me personally, when he complies with every code in the book, to say no. I, I can't, personally, I can't say no, whether I like the guy or not, that's how, that's how it is. Now, the gentleman next to you, I, I, I do feel for him, he's the one who's gonna get affected the most, but unfortunately, like Jim said, he bases his decision on a real estate, told him, oh, he can't build.
That, that is not, that is absolutely a mis, a mischaracterization, and please don't do that again, because the, the meeting was taped.
Sir, sir, listen to me.
It's not good for all of us if it starts to go down this road.
Listen, I take, don't tell, don't threaten me, okay? You said, sir, you said.
Well, my memory, excuse me.
Go ahead, let him say.
My memory of what you said was that before you bought that house, you were informed by people that due to the nature of the zoning, due to the nature of the way things happen in Wayham, that property would never be improved, it would never have another house, a different house.
My statement in that respect was that, when I.
That's, that's what I referred to.
Right, when I purchased my house, that property had been for sale for multiple years already, and the reason that I was given was that folks have looked at it and have all passed on it because they felt as though any plan that they were looking to put in place weren't, wasn't gonna be what you said. However, that is not why I was here, and that is not why I was disputing or I was against the plan.
Okay, then I apologize, because I get the impression that your testimony was, had you known that, you would not have bought the property.
No, that was not my.
That was the impression I got, and then, I apologize for drawing that conclusion that somehow I drew.
I very clearly stated at the end of the meeting, that the only concern that I had about this project was how much of a detriment my view was going to have, be impacted by this building.
All right.
And then we, then we can, we continued the meeting with the two stipulations that there's some people that are opposed to this, we need to look into this a little bit further, we'll go take a look, we agreed to let you go on our property to take a look and make a determination how much of a detriment it was gonna be to me. There was no discussion about view easements. You were gonna look at how much view I was going to lose that would allow you to make a better decision on whether or not to move forward with this. That, and that along with, well, it may be easier if you could have someone draw up a plan that shows what that elevation looks like so we can kind of visualize it, because as a layperson, I couldn't see that. Those were the things that I was opposed to, those were the conditions that were given at the end of the meeting, and that's what we were here to listen to tonight.
All right, let me, I just wanna hear Walmart, so go ahead.
All right, first of all, we have no bylaw that says that we can vote whether the view, period. And state law also has no stated bylaw that says that the towns can, how can I put it? It has, it has no say on the view either.
It's in the bylaw that you read on, 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 on record last meeting.
I have it in my hands, if you guys want me to go to it, I mean, it's, it's a consideration, but that was part of the, it's thirteen thirty-five section F, it's the last sentence.
Should be considered. So I think that these people are entitled to give their testimony, and we obligated to listen to it, and then after we listen to all the testimony, we need to make a decision.
That's, okay. Can I, I just have a question?
Go ahead, sir.
So, there's discussion about twenty-eight feet. We would, I would like to see that, since it seems to work on their side, and it is related to a plan that I, I don't know if he's actually submitted it to that, I would like to see if you're gonna decide in his favor, which.
No, we can't tell you that.
Look, I'm gonna suggest that that be a condition, in, if you should find for him, that, that you can make that a condition.
You have a question or a suggestion?
Suggestion.
Yeah, I listen. I was thinking of a rubber roof.
You said, may I ask a question, but you offered a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm not arguing, I'm just.
I'm okay.
It's okay.
I'm not sensitive.
Okay.
I'm not either.
I know, it's got to.
What are you suggesting, rubber roof maybe?
He wants a suggestion that we limit the height of the building to twenty-eight feet.
And you have a proposal?
Well, I have, I could pass this to you if you like.
I was thinking make maybe a rubber roof, save six, seven feet.
It seems to me that obviously the biggest concern is the height of the structure.
No, he's being, he's being funny. You're not gonna make him have a ranch either, are you? I'm being, trying to be funny.
It's even better ranch, for you better.
Yeah, okay.
No?
Look, we're pretty close now, I'm just trying to stay on point.
I just added a line, because we're basically showing you that it's gonna be between twenty-seven to twenty-eight feet, that's the plan that I have.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, well, why don't you, so what are you suggesting to lower the height?
I'm not suggesting, I'm saying that my plan is to stay within what I've told these others, that I would stay within a certain height, because that's on the plan anyway.
But you said, he said he has a plan.
No, I'm agreeing, believe it or not, I'm agreeing with what John is saying here, and my suggestion is that that be a condition.
Absolutely, it'll be a condition. If we are to approve, that the height will be absolutely conditioned.
Okay.
Right.
Just, just so that if I could, the board to understand, my drawing in my plan on the home has not changed since day one. This has been it. We went through conservation, we got approval there. All, all and any appeals that's happening by the abutter is all based on view obstruction, which I understand, and I'm, we discussed and, you know. Other than that, we're, if we stick to the facts of the case, we're within everything we need to be within to build this home. I am as well sensitive to Dave's view, but just to clarify, that's a condition within the rights of this board to make. I don't think there's anything else that I can do. They asked me if I would stay within, shown on that plan, and I'm happy to. And that has been our plan since the beginning.
I have more questions. Okay, you went before conservation, and they asked you to, as long as you were gonna put a new foundation, to move it back and make sure that you were thirty feet.
No.
From the no act of activity.
No, that's not right. Let me see Walmart, please.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you, do you have an idea?
On the other side, I would tell you that that, that's not accurate, that, that, they discussed that, and they.
It's not moving any further.
That was a, that was a, that was a recommendation at one point, because, I'll tell you why, because on our original plan, which is actually on that drawing I just gave you, which I Xed out, we had a deck going on to the house, the home. The suggestion was from conservation, maybe you'd like to move the house back towards the street, therefore you could then potentially add your deck. That never came to fruition, and if I may, we've already gotten approval from conservation, so that's on the site plan that this, this board currently has. In addition, just in case that was still of interest to anybody, moving the house back thirty feet would be a worst case for my.
No, it's not moving it back thirty feet, it's moving it back for its thirty feet.
He's already, he's already at the thirty-foot line.
But he plans on putting a porch.
No.
No.
I gotta remove that from the plan.
I, I think that, that, they decided in his favor, there's, we've appealed it, that's pending, but that, that has, was a decided issue at, at the board.
Yeah, that, that, that deck was, was denied, so he's not, he's not going within that thirty feet, and that's already been approved.
So this is being removed?
We removed the deck from the site plan as well as that plan, that is no longer correct.
Regarding the deck, is the deck on the water side or the street side?
Well, the deck's not gonna be at all.
So there's not one on either side? So the, in this plan?
That was on the water side, but there's.
It was on the water side.
Yeah, that deck was, was the piece that was encroaching on that thirty-foot area, but.
I was, I was not getting conservation approval with the deck on the plan, so I voluntarily removed it.
All right.
And they have since approved our plan.
I just got minutes from the meeting.
Yeah.
And that's what I was reading.
Correct. And after that was when we got our approval.
I got a question on them. I have one, just one curiosity here. This plan, and again, like I said, I think it's kind of a, a good-looking project. It says twenty-seven to twenty-eight feet. I guess that would be because.
The only reason I put that on the plan was, was for my.
So, so you could shrink it a foot if you had to, or?
Well, I didn't, I didn't have an exact.
Okay, okay.
I believe the exact is twenty, twenty-seven and a half, so I put, you know.
Okay, so it's, it's more than twenty-seven and less than twenty-eight, so, okay, I got it. I understand, that's, I can grasp that, but my question is, is that to the ridge of the roof, or is that to the peak of the cupolo?
That's the ridge of the roof.
And would, would that cupolo be objectionable to your neighbors? I'm asking through the chair.
Right.
Not to you, but I'm asking, they're sitting right here, so I'm asking right to the two neighbors right now, is the cupolo something that you object to?
No.
Okay, because if I understand height properly, it's to the highest item, you'd actually measure to the top of the cupolo, but your neighbors are just saying no, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't want this to come up down the road, that, you know, you can't, you can't have your cupolo, you can't have it, if, if, okay, that was my question.
I guess my, my question, and that's kind of leads to John's recommendation to put this as a condition, if this was approved, and the current plan states twenty-eight feet, but it somehow ends up to be thirty-four and eleven and a half inches, what, is that a problem?
We'll have to take it down.
Can I have, can I answer that?
You will not have occupancy permit, go.
When we make an, a motion, if, if the motion, for instance, if I was making the motion to approve or to grant the special permit, it would be subject to a plan submitted.
Okay.
And then I would read.
The date.
Spinell Residence, nine O'Kill Res, blah, blah, the date, drawn by somebody here, architects by SB, SPB, and that would be part of the approval.
Okay.
So if they, to answer your question, as best I can, if they in fact went against what we approved, then, yeah, then the, then the enforcement officer, who's the building commissioner, would go down there, put his state measure on it, and either tell him to take it down, or they'd never get an occupancy permit.
Okay, and just one more question, is that on the, on the plan that you're looking at, Mr. Spinelli stated that he put that twenty-eight foot on there for the benefit of us, is that part of the, is that part of the plan now, or is that just something that he drew on?
It's what I'm saying, it's, it's on the plan.
Yeah, it's on there.
Okay.
It's on the plan, so I think that there's a larger plan somewhere, but maybe there isn't.
But let me be clear, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet, that's the front of the house, not the back towards the water. You gotta, in the back, you gotta add another, to another six feet, you understand what I'm saying? So that's to the front?
Yeah.
The condition would be, the front of the house would be twenty-seven to twenty-eight feet.
I understand that.
Are you doing, are you doing, if I, you doing cedar shingles?
I'm sorry?
What kind of siding you doing, if you don't mind me asking?
It would be either cedar, or it would be a hardy plank siding.
Okay. Go ahead.
But just for the record, if I, if I've heard all of what my architects has said, and what is, J.C. Engineering has said, and this board has said, that I had, I do have the right to be thirty-five feet and under. The only reason I'm bringing this.
Thirty-five on average.
I understand.
I mean, if you do an average, you are thirty-five.
I understand. So, my point in just bringing it up is that, you know, we've, we've had a lot of time with the board, we had a lot of time with conservation, yes, that's just my willingness to, to make everyone comfortable that's involved in the project, which obviously my neighbors are involved in the project, it's a, it's a, it's a community. So I'm hoping that me, you know, putting that, help saying yes to that stipulation makes everyone comfortable, both the board as well as the abutters.
You know, like I said, if we say yes, it'll be yes based on a plan that's been presented to us. If you show me a plan at twenty-seven feet, six inches, and you build at thirty-five feet, even though you have the right maybe to build at thirty-five feet, we didn't approve thirty-five feet, we approved the plan, so that was my point to you and to your neighbors that if we say by that plan, then it's by that plan, it's not, I think I'll modify, it's not, and that's not a minor modification or a major modification, or, we're not Walmart, are we?
I understand.
Thank you.
And, so, just to further it, part of our conversation and deal was that there would be no further appeal with me putting that stipulation.
I'm sorry, there'd be no further appeal?
No further appeal by my abutters.
We can't do that.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have that, they don't have the ability.
I don't have the power to do that.
They absolutely can, no matter what we decide, there is a process that they can follow.
They could appeal all they want, so we can't tell, we can't make them.
If they just decide they don't want you to build.
We don't have a black robe on.
Twenty days, right.
And they've got the carcass.
Yes. Once we put the black robe, we'll do that.
They have to come back before us.
I understand.
We can deny their appeal.
I understand, thank you.
So don't worry about us putting in that they can appeal.
Interesting.
Well, this is it, any appeal will go to court, not to us anymore.
Yeah, all right.
No, they'll come back.
There's no appeal to us no more.
We're gonna talk less.
Well, if, I think.
They'll come before us and then go back.
If I may, for everybody's sake, I think what neighbors read in a public notice was thirty-five feet, which is the maximum allowable, which is what the applicant has referred to a couple times. So you hear thirty-five feet, and your brain goes, this character's gonna come in, he's gonna build within an inch of what the law allows him to do, and I'm not even gonna be able to see the sky, I'm gonna be in his shadow. So, and that's, I mean, that's, that's normal. If we ever, if you ever heard of, there's a, there's a chicken called Henny Penny, and an acorn fell on her head, we all know what happened from that, you know, so it's easy to react or overreact, and, and, you know, the sky isn't falling down. Now, everybody's had a chance to see the plan, I think the applicant was very wise to come in front of this board, even though he wasn't required to, to give the neighbors the opportunity to be heard, and I don't know if he's modified his plan or not, but at least now, you folks have had, have been included, and in, in my observation, I don't think that was even, you, I don't even think he had to do that.
Water under the bridge, I mean, I don't, we're not going back there, so I'll go back there.
No, you're, you're very valid with your point, and that, that was really my, I don't know what thirty-five feet looks like.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got it, that's.
Twenty-seven feet looks like.
I was, I was more than happy, or more than desired to go drive down the street. I've been on Oak Hill Terrace a lot of times, I sold the house right next door to you, I'm also in the real estate business, but, you know, I needed to drive by and see for myself what, or how, or who, and I'm pretty comfortable to make a decision this evening, and, and I'm happy to have had the benefit of having had a week to go look.
Just to give you an idea, right now, he's, he's top of the ridge, probably eight and, it's probably about sixteen feet right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is it sixteen?
That's correct, yeah.
So sixteen.
Another twelve feet.
Another twelve feet. If you look at the elevation of the, the topographic of the land, you look in fifteen, twenty, if you add the street, about twenty feet from the street, so if, if you add the road, twenty feet above the road, and I don't, you have, you're above the road, road about, to your deck, as I noticed, about eight feet.
Yeah.
Anyway, my, my recommendation, if we close the public hearing, we'll take it into advisement, we'll render our decision within forty-five days, we'll make a decision and vote on it. If we are, I have few, can, few, can, few comments, the house cannot be over twenty, between twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet from the front, deciding to be cedar shingle or hardy plank, shed apparently has to be removed. Is there anything else you guys would like to discuss, or the neighbors would like to, any comments?
No.
That doesn't mean this, this thing gonna be approved, I'm just saying, if it is I'm just saying, if it is to be approved. Call you, want to, any conditions or something, or suggestion, not condition, should I say?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Nazzy, just on the siding, possible vinyl shake? I mean, you sound very specific here. I wanna make sure.
I may, I may not go, I'll go with this vinyl.
Okay.
You know, just for the character of the neighborhood.
We all have vinyl.
Yeah.
I know, but I think...
I think on the waterfront, vinyl is vinyl, you know, you're gonna be painting it.
I know, the shingle like.
You could do, you could do, you could do cedar impression.
I understand.
Don't pick a stick up for the guy. I mean, you're, you're...
The new vinyl shake, I'm not saying, I just, it's, it's non-maintenance on the wall.
Cedar impression.
It's correct.
You could do cedar impression, that's fine, vinyl.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make it as quaint as possible for the neighborhood.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
Well, I think that, I think the design, I think the plan kinda does that, Nazzy. I think they, architect has done a good job. It does keep the neighborhood.
But if you go make a vinyl siding, it'll look different. All right.
Well, yeah, when you said vinyl, you're thinking of a clapwood look, a cedar shake, a cedar shake.
Cedar vinyl is fine. All right, any, you guys wanna, anyone else wanna say anything before we close? No? So let's move to close the public...
I moved to close the hearing.
All right, I have a motion by Jim to close public hearing. Which number is it? 22-17. Do I have a second? Second by call. Any discussion in closing it? If you have none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. I recommend that we take our time within the guidelines for, to render a decision, and we'll let you know what our decision will be. All right, very well. Thank you very much. All right, Jim.
We're done?
We're done.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Just one, one minute, let me see. In the meantime, if you guys wanna talk more, it's always helpful. All right, any, any correspondence? There's nothing? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you. Thanks, Noah. All right.